I have a car, but she is back. She wasn't feeling, still wasn't feeling good. I'm guess, I'm, I'm. She was just, like I said, wasn't feeling all good. She had her worst again. And I kept going on. Add any additional stress. It's a bunch. It's just. She just, I mean, she still didn't want to.
Yeah, I just, I just said.
But he was, that's why she came back. Well, my kind of one, my son. And three or four in my honor. So they send something to. And she was like, uh. She was like, no, that sounds like, that's not what this is.
Well, you may not know.
No. Yes. See, and that's what it was. Well, once you smell that, you never forget. It's like your Christmas. Once you. You don't forget about it either.
Well, I was thinking about that because I was thinking, once you get this. It can be only two weeks for some stuff. It might not be limited to six, but.
Yeah. So see, Andrew is struggling with it. I started mine out there back July. Oh, so she's. Oh, she's good. She has a. Oh, she's. Cause I, mine, there's, as of just five.
But you're getting four sixteen, you're getting four eighteen.
So she's fine. Yeah, that's okay. But yeah. I'm sorry, Stuart, by now.
Hi, I'm Melissa. I talked to all the citizens to see.
And it's been several years now, but it's just. You won't talk to Joyce. So Melissa now. Well, and I know that. Yeah, so.
How you doing?
Good, yourself? You're all right? Good. Sure. Is that good, Tom?
Yeah.
There. Good.
We appreciate it though.
Hey, this is Chris.
On your order, Mr. Williams, please do the blood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no legal counsel this evening, so. Is there a motion to, or is there any additions for allegiance, Agent?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the public business, the Minister of the last public business meeting?
Sooner or later.
All right. Our first presentation tonight is for National Social Work Month. We have Jennifer Gell.
Thank you for having us stand every year. We, Helen, you were gracious enough to give us a proclamation. And with me today, I have two other social workers. We have the N A, the National Association of Social Workers, Western Region Representative, Carol, Carolyn Fossett Andrews, Donna Fost, who is with Alzheimer's Association. And then we have our AHEC West, Melissa Clark, who is our liaison, and Richard Kirk. The Allegheny Garrett Social Work Caucus is hosted by AHEC West. And we are happy to report that currently we have one hundred and eighty-nine members of our caucus. And that spans Allegheny and Garrett County. This year, March being National Social Work Month, NASW has declared it the theme to be, "Social workers stand up by advocating for empowering millions of Americans each day." And I also wanted to note that right now, the social work profession is the fastest growing in the United States. So that's, that's quite a feat. And I think that everybody at some point in their lives will come in contact with a social worker. And so I would love to say thank you for acknowledging this important profession that I am so proud to be a part of. And again, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to meet here. We do have our social work luncheon appreciation luncheon on March twenty-second. And we will be announcing our two thousand seventeen Social Worker of the Year. The nominees this year is Jennifer Brenn, Brenneman, Carolyn Fossett Andrews, Corin Phaseofmaker, Jessica Nice, Joy Reckley Murphy, and Penny Thomas. Thank you.
Will we do a proclamations? Please come on up. Everyone invited to, yeah, the whole, the whole front row. It reads, whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance the well-being and health of basic needs of all people. Whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States. These professionals work daily to help overcome substance abuse disorders, mental illnesses such as depression. Social workers also assist people overcome like extraordinary events, floods, tornadoes, and other natural disasters. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, wish to thank and commend all social work professionals who make life better for Allegheny County residents and proclaim March two thousand seventeen the Social Work Month for Allegheny County. That's signed, Reeve Brody, Bill Valentine, Jake Shad. Congratulations.
One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our public hearing. Item number two is a, is a public hearing for Code Number Rule Bill three dash seventeen, Maryland Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. Mr. Barton, please.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Gerard Neely from Pace Financial Servicing made a presentation at the Commissioners' Work Session on January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, on the Clean Energy Line Program. And then with the assistance of the county's legal department, we introduce Code Number Rule Bill three dash seventeen for your consideration at the February twenty-third public hearing. Gerard is here this evening. He would like to say a few words. And after he speaks, then we would like to conduct the public hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Sorry.
Back here in Allegheny County. As stated earlier, I'm Gerard Neely, the program manager for Maryland's Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, commonly referred to as PACE. In partnership with the Maryland Clean Energy Center and my firm, Pace Financial Servicing, we administer PACE programs throughout the state. I'm here tonight in support of C H R Bill three seventeen, three dash seventeen, establishing a Clean Energy Line Program. This legislation, if enacted, would allow commercial building owners, retail building owners, nonprofits, houses of worship, to conduct energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades to their buildings to reduce energy costs and to hopefully invest more money into their companies and into the county. This will hopefully produce an increased economic activity and jobs here in the county. PACE is a customized solution for these types of buildings to energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades. Throughout the state, we now have eleven jurisdictions that have adopted PACE. And nationally, thirty-three states have enabled PACE legislation and there are nineteen programs active in the country. There have been around a thousand PACE projects in the state of Maryland. We actually had our first PACE project a couple of months ago in Cumberland, Allegheny. So I'm here in support of the bill. I am glad to be back here and I hope to continue to be up here. And I can hope we have broken weddings in the future with renewable energy and energy efficiency projects in the county. Thank you.
We were, we were impressed a couple of months ago when you came out and happy to support it. It is public comment period, so is there any public comment on the PACE program? Gerard, Mr. Benj.
Mr. Benj, you just use your, your full name and your address. I'm named Doug Benj. I reside at five oh one Moore Street, Cumberland, Maryland. And I have a project currently in progress of a twenty-unit multifamily project. It's stated to be one of the first ones to be net zero in multifamily in the nation. It's not the world for mid-rise apartments. And the only way that's going to be possible is with PACE funding. And I would look forward to the funding here. As Dave knows, I've approached him several times about this. I'd ask you to also to consider allowing the lender to have the terms extended to twenty-five years at their discretion. And that's pretty wonderful.
I don't think we specify one way or the other, the number of years. So that, that'll be at their, at their pleasure.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Your answer's closed.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Gerard.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item number three, Allegheny County Director of Economic and Community Development. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, our public business meeting back on October sixth of last year announced a pending restructuring of the county's Department of Economic and Community Development. Since that time, the county conducted a search for a new department head as Matt Talias accepted the new position with the county. Tonight, I would like for us to take the next step in our restructuring efforts. Commissioners, consistent with Article four dash five of the county's rules and regulations, I'm pleased to recommend ratification this evening, Mr. Jeffrey Husbarkley, as the county's next director of the Department of Economic and Community Development. If you know Commissioners, Jeffrey has been serving in the acting capacity since November of last year. And since you all are familiar with Jeff, he's about a new commodity. I'm just moving forward to the Commissioners if you would like to entertain a motion. So move.
Seven on favor.
Aye. Ask him to.
At this two and a half limit. Jeff, congratulations. And we look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you.
Congratulations, Jeff.
I thank you Administrator Everly and the county commissioners for giving me this opportunity to lead Economic Community Development in Allegheny County. As many are aware, I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. And I married my high school sweetheart after attending Allegheny High School, Allegheny College, Maryland, Rossburg State University. And we chose to stay in Allegheny County for family and to raise our two children, ages eight and twelve. For those that would know me, know that my wife is a saint and she does mostly the raising of kids, but that's a whole nother topic altogether. But, I mean, the takeaway from this is, as Dave says, I am a new commodity. And I have a positive attitude and a passion for Allegheny County and our future. And I want to see our true potential come to fruition because it's, it's personal for me. And with my staff, I plan to continue to work on many of things, of the things that we do well. And will also be receptive to new ideas that have the potential of making Allegheny County a better place to live and conduct business operations. So thanks.
All right, Daniel.
Sir, we wish you the very best of luck I do. So. Jeffrey, I know we're going to ask a lot of you, and we have them for the last year. And then you have to be able to teach one of the three of us with three completely different individuals. Me, I don't like to wait on nothing, so.
Well, that's good. Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number four, we have a possible action on Code Number Rule Bill one dash seventeen, Salary Study Commission.
Commissioners, in the absence of Mr. Rudd this evening, we have received the report from the Salary Study Commission. It's introduced. We've accepted public comment period. And tonight, the legislative meeting announces an opportunity for you to take official action.
Is there any further public comment? You're none. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, we have possible action on Code Number Rule Bill two dash seventeen, revisions to Allegheny County zoning code. Ms. Angie Patterson, data received.
So we had a public hearing on February twenty-third for Code Number Rule Bill two dash seventeen, revisions to Parkland zoning. At the hearing, I presented two proposed amendments to what we had already kind of put out there for public comment. I have received no comments since then that were relevant to the text amendment. I did receive one comment that was regarding a potential resanding, but that's not relevant to the text amendment. So. The two amendments that we discussed at the public hearing were, one was with regard to proposed new use, small-scale product development and technological innovation enterprises. And we had just, we realized that we had incorporated a little bit too much in that definition. And so we wanted to reduce that down. So that is a land use that includes research and design and other like manufacturing. It doesn't include the agricultural components or the event components. And then, and then number two, we kind of, we realized that we had captured some examples of private commercial recreation areas in our new table format, but we hadn't captured kind of the overall general use of that that maybe applied to other things besides those examples. So, and then number two just incorporates that into our table format. So notable changes there.
Mr. Dorsey, any additional comments?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, in the legislative meeting, we should entertain a motion to amend verse two dash seventeen as originally proposed.
Seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we do final passage?
Now we can do final passage.
All right. With amendments, is there a motion to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you, David. Thank you for the lift on this one. We really appreciate it.
Lot of work. All right. Next, we have the road opening petition, Lavailed United Methodist Church.
Commissioners, tonight is an opportunity for us to take official action to open the proposed pick action, to open this proposed right away. If you choose to do that on March the twenty-third, actually, I'm sorry, the twenty-fourth, we will have an opportunity to hold a public committee to take official action to then close. So what we need tonight, Commissioners, at this point in time, based upon the petition you have before you, is a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is authorizing fiscal year two thousand eighteen transit grant applications. Mr. Roy.
Evening, Commissioners. This is simply an exercise we go through every year. It's a requirement of the grant application to have a resolution that gives the authority to file for the grant application. And to either the county administrator or the president of the county commissioners can sign the documents that are involved with that application.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight is a priority letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation. Mr. Eberle.
Good evening. So in order to get our transportation projects to the state, we send in a priority letter every year. This year, we had twenty, twenty-two projects. And on March first, we had a meeting where we prioritized them and the order of importance. And so I'd like the county commissioner to send a letter to the state. I'm working on getting endorsement signatures from our delegates and.
Yeah, that was, that was quite a list of autographs you needed there.
I have Senator Edwards, Barton, Leonard Fanning, Luke, and Westernford already, and Cumberland. It's up today. So anyway, if I can get your autographs as well, that'd be great.
Is there a motion?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Item number nine is fiscal year two thousand eighteen Cumberland Area Unified Planning Work.
So the Cumberland area MTO has planning plans. And this is kind of laying out the, the plans that we're going to accomplish in two thousand eighteen. So there's six on there for general administration of the transport, like transport program would be met on occasion, as well as other transportation projects for transit and for other sort of transportation. So. That's the Cumberland area MTO.
Is there a discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number ten is Resolution seventeen dash nine, Potomac Highlands Airport Authority. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, back in nineteen ninety-nine, the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority borrowed one point eight seven four million dollars from the Maryland Aviation Administration to construct a commercial airline hangar at the regional airport. Since that time, the airport has endeavored to seek a, a long-term tenant as a commuter air service, and they have not been successful in doing that. But at this time, they are requesting that the state of Maryland consider forgiving one point three million some odd dollars of the loan that they borrowed. Allowing them the opportunity to repurpose their annual debt service payments of approximately sixty-two thousand dollars in other capital needs that they have at the airport. So we received a letter from the airport manager last month, and they requested an endorsement in form of a resolution.
Yeah, and I can speak just a little bit on this because what's going on is around the state, the MAA is, is doing this for several the smaller airports and trying to give them some working capital to actually revamp existing hangars or for other things. But if, if the state goes along with this under the guidelines, that money has to be spent and reinvested back in the airport. So it's not like they can just take the money and just leave it sit or spend it on something that's, that's off-site. It has to go back into the airport. So I thought it was a worthwhile try. We've been in contact with four hundred smaller airports around the state that's done that. So. We could have a little ask. The worst they can say is no.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Who's in their consent agenda, Mr. Everly?
Commissioners, tonight, we have four items on your consent agenda for possible action. Item eleven is a motion to approve the award of the Northridge Industrial Park Rehab Project, i.e. construction in the amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, subject to state approval, and authorize the president to sign any and all necessary documents. Commissioner, item number twelve is a motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. John P. Deppenball to his six-year term on the Lavailed Sanitary Commissioning Board. Item thirteen is a motion to approve a hauling contract for both sludge and recycling services for the period of July the first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Commissioners, item fourteen is a motion to authorize the county's Department of Economic and Community Development to advertise the Fairgrounds Event Wi-Fi Expansion Project. This will involve the acquisition and installation of ten more access units throughout the fairgrounds and key locations, giving us the opportunity for four hundred to correct prices to utilize during major festival events. Commissioners, if you approve this consent agenda, item number fourteen, we hope to have finished by the end of May.
Yeah, that would be great. You know, I'm, I'm happy to support events out of the fairgrounds and capital improvements for the fairgrounds as well. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Second.
And with something to do with the Lavailed Sanitary Commission, if you consent the agenda, so I'd like to abstain from voting.
All right, we can do that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We took care of it.
The one I'm staying.
Yeah. Creed will acknowledge your abstention for item number twelve.
Right. Okay.
Before we move on, we do need to read a statement regarding the closed session held on Thursday, February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, at three-thirty in room four oh eight. Word of county commissioners, a meeting convened on Thursday, February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Vote if you manage to please to go into closed session. Meeting time and place and purpose of the meeting were provided under public notice distributed on February twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The notice was provided in the same manner and also the same entities as received the commissioners' regular business meeting notices. The meeting was closed in accordance to the general provisions article of Benedicta Code in Maryland, section three dash three oh five, and the purpose of the meeting was closed were as follows. Consider the matter concerning proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, remain in the state to discuss the appointment, deployment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. Consultation with counsel to obtain legal advice concerning matters referenced in number one and number two above. Commissioners first discussed the intention of a company to potentially locate in a building owned by the county in one of its industrial parks. No action was taken by the board of commissioners on this particular matter. Commissioners also discussed personnel matter. Discussion was initiated by Commissioner Brody concerning the possible creation of a new position in county government. Discussion was had as to the appropriate procedure for creating and filling such a position. No decisions were made, no votes were taken. No further business was to be conducted in closed session, therefore, appointed by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Commissioners voted unanimously to adjourn at four forty-five P.M. Those persons present during the entire closed session were Commissioner Jacob C. Shade, Commissioner Creepie Brody, Commissioner William R. Valentine, county administrator Deputy Everly, county attorney, Mr. Andrew N. Rudd. Presenting for discussion, the first item was Jeffrey S. Barkley, Director of Economic Development, presenting for discussion. The second item was Brian P. Westphal, Director of Human Resources, Cindy on recording, Secretary. Commissioner?
Commissioners, nothing further?
Commissioner Valentine.
Just real briefly, things in Annapolis actually seem to be going our way a little bit this year. As you know, about not eight or nine years ago, the state took away highway user funds, which was about a four million dollar hit to the county. I had the opportunity to testify on replacing some of those funds probably four or five times this year, both on behalf of the county and behalf of Mako. And both committee chairs, the chair in the House and in the Senate, the post said they're going to see to it we give some funds returned. So, they're not going to bring it back all at once, but it looks like we'll start getting small doses of it. And VAT subject system war still continues. They've delayed vote on that probably four or five times, but it looks like this area of the state will probably be taken out of the VAT restrictions. I mean, that's a huge restriction for this area of the state. It was designed for the critical areas around the bay, and then, as they normally do, they put throughout the entire state. VAT subject system in this area costs about thirty-five thousand dollars, ten stone, probably five hundred dollars here worth of maintenance. So, you can see that really are construction in this area.
Well, I couldn't imagine that the state overregulating anything. I have nothing to say, but I know we've got some people here who want to speak tonight, and they have some good stuff to talk about, so, sir, I'd like to yield my comment to them.
All right. Just very quickly, one of the amendments we added to the zoning code on small-scale product development and technology enterprises, what's included in that is farm brewing and breweries. So, we have some interest in people wanting to brew and produce their own beer here locally, and we're supportive of that.
I've seen that for years.
That's exactly right. And so now, it'll be legally permitted under zoning, and clears up some of the uses, and that's something exciting for the county moving forward.
Usually, we do the section on providing the county commissioners free samples.
Yeah, well, we.
I was a supporter of Old German. I wasn't much of a west folk, and I still like Old German, so if you want to re-brew that again, Jake, do your.
I was going to say, how old are you? What?
Beer and use.
Oh, that's right. All right. Sign up to speak first tonight is Mr. Rick Binninger with the Cumberland raceway.
And Rick, if you would, please say, can you have with you?
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for your time. Like you said, I'm Rick Binninger, the Commonwealth Commonwealth raceway. We have Todd Broke, which is our new promoter out there, wife Andrea, Dave Trautman, which is just donated, donated, donated to get this going. And then in the back behind him is Kristy Cantle, which she's kind of our spark plug. She keeps us all going, but she's somebody that's volunteered since day one. Just want to give you an update on where we're at. I think some of you guys have been out there. We're ready to kick off next weekend, or we're going to kick off regardless, rain's new, whatever. The endurance race first. We've had a huge response to that. We've got cars coming from Potomac, Maryland, Southern Virginia, Baltimore. We've got guys coming from everywhere for this endurance race. It's truly went, really taken off above our wildest expectations. First of all, for that, are any of you planning on coming out next weekend? Are y'all planning on being there? We'd like to give you guys, you know, we would like to do this on the fifteenth day when we have our first drill race, kind of have a, like ribbon-cutting ceremony if y'all are available. I think we're going to try to get Ben and Angie Evans to come in. He's kind of, I understand, he's kind of a founding father out there. But, I mean, we're here, it's ready, it's going to happen. And I brought some pictures, and we haven't displayed it, Chris, but Chris is pretty in-depth, and she's camera crazy. But there is some boards back here that if anybody would like to see after the meeting, that where we were and where we're at. But we do have some pictures, if you guys can see if anybody hasn't been out there. Just kind of, just like pass them down, you know, what we're doing paint-wise. Here's race surface.
Who put this together?
Chris. Krista did. Krista actually somehow, her and one of the other ladies a couple weeks ago got over, got over and walked the road up on the big rocks and took some really good aerial shots down over. But the last picture I showed you there that you're looking at, you can see the guys working in the mud hole. The previous promoter, when he left, he just stripped the place. Stuff we need, that breaker he took out there is going to cost us six hundred dollars to put back in. And that's got to be in there because it's for the safety of the county breaker boxes. It's my understanding from Kevin, if that breaker, to fill the water truck the way that's set up right now, it takes three people. You got to, and you got to be in constant communication. That breaker's got to be in there, or we're going to blow breakers up in your boxes at a hundred and some dollars apiece. The county, does county have any interest in putting that breaker in for us? Because you guys can benefit from it for Delfas and everything else using the water. Is there any interest there?
Yeah. Picture, just take a motion, and the cost, can anticipate the cost of breaker?
Pardon me, sir?
And the anticipated cost?
Six hundred dollars. If we get it counted, because I'll be honest with you, we're not electricians, not of that nature. That's heavy duty wiring. If, you know, as a county electrician, or as a county electrician could install it. Kevin. Kevin knows, Kevin knows what we need, probably a contractor's breaker. But, you know, if there's any way at all, the county would foot that bill.
I think that should be counted. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate that. Mr. Kale?
Thank you, Matt.
But we would like, if y'all are out there next weekend, what we kind of like to do is maybe have all everybody there, somebody get up on the flag, say, one of you guys started the flag for the endurance race, get them going. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. Another issue we have, we didn't, we didn't realize, Kevin, you met with Todd. We've got, once we start to super late mile race, we've got guys coming from Baltimore, Pittsburgh, all over the place that's already made contact with, want to come to Cumberland race, just I think basically because of history. It's our understanding, we're not allowed to let them camp out there, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Unless you rent the entire Fairgrounds.
Okay, so.
Set in policy and that.
Okay, what, what does that cost encourage? We would want to do that.
To rent the entire Fairgrounds, probably fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay, so that's not worth us putting, letting them camp.
And then it creates an issue for us having somebody there full-time.
Right. We're just asking, because we just, like you said, we, we actually told these folks they could camp thinking they could, and then we found out today. So, that's something we've got to go back on our end and fix, which is not a big deal. So.
I hope you get big enough where you want to take the whole thing for a weekend of a time like that, but it really, there's only really two events a year that the campground is even open for, because we have to keep maintenance staff there for, and that's all.
Right.
Rick, why don't you give the time next week for the, for the media?
Oh, yeah. Gate's open at twelve, race at four. Yeah, if you guys can get that out, because I'll be honest with you, we've had, two things we've had a terrible time with is obviously getting this out in papers. You did a lot for us last time, I can appreciate that.
Oh, I'm glad, it's perfect timing. When you got here, it was perfect.
Second thing is, I don't know if you know, and I'm not knocking any service in the county, but you know how much it costs us to do fire and rescue out there for a season? Eighteen thousand dollars to let them come out and set. Hopefully, we never need them. So, we've put together a crew of EMTs and firefighters. We bought a fire truck, we're going to pick it up tomorrow. We're putting together our own crew, so they'll stabilize till somebody, till ambulance gets there, and then we'll send an EMT with the ambulance. I understand the ambulance and fire trucks can't come out, but there's just no way we could eat eighteen thousand dollars just for that coverage. I mean, that's, that's a lot. And we had a terrible time finding anybody. Apparently, there's a lot of money owed to a lot of the fire and ambulance companies from the previous promoter, and I just found out about that. So, I understand why they have a bad taste, you know, they don't want to come out there. But we did put together that, working with a firefighter, EMT, the same, it's actually the same guy as us, Hakers Towns, but. And insurance company approved it, and we're good to get out. That'll save us a lot of money, we have. Like I said, feel free to look at pictures.
The exact date of the race, exactly?
Oh, it's next Saturday, the eighteenth. Yeah.
You have Heather to drive in that?
Do what?
You have car ready for Heather to drive in that to work?
We probably find something for her to drive.
Heather in gallons, doing a hundred-mile enduro.
Hopefully, there's some cars left in the hundred mile. But we're.
Oh, is it one and starts at four?
Yeah, gate's open at noon, race at four, and it'll be two hours or a hundred laps, whoever comes first. We're going to make it good and muddy, so hopefully, it'll be the two hours. We canceled our demolition derby mid-late through summer because everybody else is having derbies and we're having another endurance race in this place, because I think these guys will be there.
Great.
You guys got any questions?
None.
Keepers up.
Appreciate everything, County.
All right.
We'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, sign up, Mr. Bob Candy.
Paul, we expect you to have that pressure in by nine in the morning.
Got it.
Okay.
I have a check right about six.
Yes, sir.
For a meeting.
Oh, okay. If you would, just your name and address for.
I'm Bob Candy. My address, one two six oh five Morris Boulevard, Cumberland, Maryland. I do in the Tri-State Zoo located here in Cumberland. And really speaking here on behalf of the zoo, last week, I sort of got blindsided, I understand the day of the meeting and in the paper afterwards. Not know anything about it. And I sort of came to, I guess, as a rebuttal, as well as to just present the facts as they really are. Number one, I know you've had Mrs. Mannes speak last week, and I will apologize to her for the items that we have out there. We do have a lot of stuff that's donated to us and brought out there, and people are constantly always bringing stuff out to us. We are always building something. Very much MacGyver's when it comes to things out there. Somebody gives me a crate, well, there's wood that can be used, there's metal that it can be used for a hundred different purposes, not just a crate. You make things work, that's what we do out there. But unfortunately, it couldn't just stop at, there's a problem with what they call the junk, what we refer to as construction materials, with some materials out there that we do that we haven't cleaned up. Our process of cleaning had already began a month ago. We do this every year, because every year, people just bring stuff out to just drop it off. I mean, for example, we had two thousand pound cows just dropped off at our parking lot like all this fact, because they think we did feed it off. Love to, but I don't have a weight to move or push for a two thousand pound cow. But that's what happens out there. Now, the zoo, we built that for the community out here. Mrs. Mannes makes some claims that were not true, and I just need to make sure that this is on file. She claimed that her house value decreased one hundred thousand dollars because of the zoo and the debris and all that was out there. Mrs. Mannes's value of her house is two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. It's been that way for three years in a row. I have the facts of when she bought it, what she paid for it, all her improvements that she made, and she has not lost a cent based on the zoo value. This has been an ongoing thing, and I understand this, Miss Mannes posted that she goes into depression every February. That's on her post, she puts that out there. And this is not a fun time of year. Nothing looks good. We had some moist weather, but still, things are muddy. Things look a mess. Things just aren't good. We're not helping by having some stuff in construction materials out there, but we are also an ongoing project. That's what we do. We're constantly building, we're constantly changing, and that's because we want this to see something a little bit different every year. We just don't want to see people go back and, every year, seems the exact same thing. Constantly moving, is that how we get new animals and do things? We're constantly doing different things. She also referred to us as not addressing it, the issue, well, we've already received a letter a month before that, even before we got the letter. Bring permits and all that can be verified through the counties and all that. We've already started cleaning up. Construction and cleaning up. And then she did make the comment that the poorest parts of Mexico do look worse than we are out there, and I would hate to disagree with that, but that's, that's just an absurd statement. There's a difference between giving your opinion and giving a fact. And none of this is fact that she had, it was just opinion. So, I respect her opinion, but at the same time, and I apologize for any mess we have out there, but we're constantly moving forward. Now, on the other hand, we have Mr. Rudd, and unfortunately, he's not here today, who I would like to address. Mr. Rudd made various, a lot of slanderous remarks, and they need to be addressed by committed here. One of his comments, "The rear run's so poorly, we should be shut down." I'm not sure where he gets his information from. The Tri-State Zoo is not run poorly. We're debt-free actually out there. We've been in business for sixteen years now. That's a lot more than a lot of businesses in the area here. It's never cost the county one cent for us to be out there. In fact, you make money, all of us do, we pay taxes. So, there's nothing out there that warrants us being a poorly-run business. Although, he did cite to numerous occasions for failed inspections and for citations under the Animal Welfare Act. Well, a lot of people don't understand how we operate out there. We're licensed by the USDA. Under the USDA, we are licensed to follow, it's called the Animal Welfare Act. If anybody gets a chance to read it, take your time and read it. You'll find it's a very vague thing. For example, it says you need to have a fence around your animals. Let's say a hall high, doesn't say what it's made out of, doesn't say anything, it's just a very vague statement. But it's up to an inspector to come out and say, ah, you might want to do that a little bit more. That's what an inspection is. But if they write it, that's not a citation as we've been told that we have in the papers. We have never, emphasize the word, never failed one inspection. You can't fail an inspection real, because it's what it is. It's an inspection. They come out and they say, this is what we want you to do. Okay, but you probably can't fail one, which we've never had. They come out, and they tell you things that they like to see you to do. They don't always, not everything on an inspection is something wrong. Sometimes, they don't even know themselves are wrong because they keep changing all the rules and regulations. The Animal Welfare Act is an act of Congress, and it's not like they can just go ahead and make their own rules. They have to go by what's in the book. It's a very simple book, but they may just come out and say, here's the description of the tiger cage that we have. And it's up to somebody else down USDA, five, six years later, to tell you whether it's right or wrong. Sometimes, you just don't know.[1795.72] And then there's the whole appeals process or thing, it's sort of a ridiculous process because the appeal judge actually works for USDA, and when you appeal that judge, they also work for USDA. So it's sort of a strange appeal process that you have, unless you want to go to the circus courts and the sports. Most people don't, it's designed for that. One of the comments made that we do take a lot of issue with, because we hear this all the time, failed numerous inspections over the years as reported by PETA. Now, PETA, to those of you that don't know PETA, PETA is an animal rights organization. They do not govern us, they have nothing to do with the zoo. They really are, they think they are a terrorist organization, and they are registered to something. So, but we have to give, we have a tendency here to give them credence for, I don't know why, we just think because PETA said something, it means something. It means nothing. It just means you have a group out there who wants to create a problem. And they said that we were cited on this and had all these failed things. Again, they reported incorrectly. But nobody else saw us at the zoo, they just take that as, well, PETA said this, and it must be fact. Well, it's not fact, and we have to deal with that every day. Part of our problem with the zoo is, we're always open to public opinion, we're open up to, I guess, all the rules and regulations, I go out there with running a zoo and take care of animals. Taking care of animals is a very personal thing to a lot of people. So some people think that they know better how to take care of the animals we do. I doubt there's anybody in here who can tell me how to take care of the tigers and lions all better than I do, except PETA, of course, because they love to tell me that my lions and tigers are very unhappy, even though I raised them since they were born. So we have a lot of issues in process of what's being said. We deal with fact out there. Not, we deal with public opinion in that we try to listen to what the public has to say. We're not a fancy place out there. We're not meant to be fancy. If you want to go fancy, go to Pittsburgh, go to Baltimore, go to Smithsonian. They're the ones that are supported by their counties, their states, their whatever they are. We receive no funding from the county. We've only received two things from the county in the entire time we've been out there. One of them is when they, if I stop and ask the county people, as they're cutting trees down and mauling it up, I say, hey, can you bring us out to mauls? And they bring me out to mauls. The other one is Mr. Dorsey actually had some signs made up for us that are put on the corner when you come off the highway, Inscape Zoo. That's it. We've received no money, no funding. And we have to be honest, we really have a master right here. All we ask is support. We built this for the community. I don't think a lot of people understand, the zoo is not just a collection of animals. The zoo is an ongoing working entity. We have a collection of animals out there. The zoo owns no assets. The zoo just exhibits the animals. They're actually owned by our rescue, Animal Park Care and Rescue. Is there a buyer, 1C3, not for profit out there? Every animal we have out there is a rescue. They come from surplus in zoos, they come from people who have things as pets, they come from handicapped, they are abused animals, you name it. We've, we're not really a cat rescue, but we've, people just drop off cats every day. I never know when I'm going to show up, how many cats I'm going to find that day. But we've also adopted out 300 cats to the area out there. We do things like that. That's what we try to do. I don't, don't really drop off any cats out there. But we also do things, like we have interns that have come out from the schools. We do all the school programs. They come out to the zoo, we go to the schools. We have interns from the colleges come out, we have the handicapped that all come out and volunteer and work out there. Many of you know, we had a fire in 2006, not a good thing. The property sat empty for 20-some years, and I don't know if there's a timeline on this.
Yeah, we're going to have to wrap up here.
Okay. 2006, we had a fire. I mean, everybody forgets that when I got the property back in 2002, when I first started working on it, the property had sat empty for a long period of time, and basically, it was a junkyard. We took 71 loads of garbage out of there to even get started. And then we got a fire, we had to take another load out there. So we've done a lot out there. I don't think we get recognized for what we do as much as when people want to complain. We get the complaints, but we don't want to get the acknowledgement for some of the stuff we do out there. Again, we're not always perfect, we're not glamorous, but we are what we are out there. And we just ask that if there are statements that are going to be made, they should be based on fact, not people's opinions that are wrong for whatever reason. Just like for me, which seemed to be an issue with Mr. Rudd, even though I haven't talked to him since 2014. So all we ask is that things be presented as they actually should be.
Thank you, Mr. Key. All right, our next public business meeting is Thursday, March 23rd, at 5 o'clock. We also have a budget hearing that day, 1 o'clock. Both in this room. Thank you.